Good evening, everyone. My name is Malley Rosado and I am the Council President for the Court of Common Council for the City of Hartford. I want to call this evening this meeting of the Neighborhood Assistance Act, or NAA for short, as known by many of you. This evening, I have with me Councilman Gail, and I'm going to read the names as I have them on the screen. Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, Councilman Lake LeBron, Councilman James Sanchez, Representative from the Council President's Office, David Grant, our CFO Jennifer Hockenhall. And then from also the Management and Grants Departments, we have Mr. Evan Johnson and Mr. Ronnie Vasquez. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us and thank you for everyone who signed up to speak tonight. The council is here to hold this meeting as we do every year. The NAA is a program run by the Department of Revenue Services. It offers a corporate tax credit to businesses who donate to nonprofit organizations to support activities approved under the program. The council's role is to act on behalf of the City of Hartford to do three things. First, the council holds the required annual hearing. Anyone can come to the hearing to advocate for approval of an NAA application or to speak against the approval. Then the council reviews all of the applications that were received. Finally, the council acts to approve submitting the applications to the Department of Revenue Services. The Office of Central Grants handles the administration and supports the council in these proceedings. They are here tonight to answer any questions. And again, I'm going to recognize our CFO Jennifer Hockenhall, Ronnie Vasquez, and Evan Johnson, who have worked behind the scenes to help this hearing happen. Thank you all for your time and dedication. As a reminder to everyone, this meeting will be broadcasted and recorded by the Hartford Public Access Television and will be made available on their mediums, which include HartfordPublicAccessTV.org, Facebook, YouTube, Channel 96 for Comcast customers and Channel 6032 for Frontier customers. Before we begin, I understand the Central Grants have a brief presentation, so I will yield the floor to them. But before I do that, I think, yes, our Majority Leader, Councilman Clark, just joined us. Good evening, Councilman Clark. Mr. Evans, you have the floor.
All right, I'll try to share my screen with everyone. Just let me know if this works.
It does.
Okay. Because he, great.
He has started sharing the screen, yes.
Okay, you can see the slides?
We can, thank you.
Great. So yeah, thank you again for having us here today to talk about the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Just have a very brief presentation that I'll walk you through just to kind of reintroduce you to the program. And for those who are joining us, just to make sure we're all working with this information here. So just a few of the topics we'll cover. And overview, as you mentioned, the NAA is a Connecticut Department of Revenue Services program that offers tax credits incentivizing contributions by for-profit businesses to nonprofit organizations. Municipalities like Hartford are required by state law to manage and oversee the local process. Central Grants takes on that role for the City of Hartford. Just want to reiterate and be clear, it's not a grant program. Funds for the proposed projects are solicited by the nonprofit organization themselves from corporate donors. And then those tax credits that the corporate donors would get from the donation are then authorized by the State Department of Revenue Services. Here's a list of eligible programs. They range in everything from energy concentrate and upgrade to loan forgiveness, to community services, crime prevention, patient employment, childcare services. A really broad spectrum of programs that are covered under this program. So the process kind of goes like this. It starts with taxes of organizations completing something called an NAA01. And they submit that here to our office, to Ronnie, who's also on the call. We had forms due on May 7th of this year. Those proposals are subject to a public hearing. The one we're actually in right now was approved by the State Council. The city will submit those applications to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services on or before July 1st, 2021. Then by September 15th of each year, DRS will issue a list of NAA programs that are eligible to solicit donations and indicate what those funding limits for the donation are. So as I mentioned, business entities are eligible to receive tax credits for those contributions. Those business for-profit entities that make the donations then have to complete another form, NAA02, for each past contribution that's eligible. And this fiscal year, those will be due to the state on October 1st. So the key dates after this, July 1st, September 15th, then October 1st. And then, once that's done, Revenue Services will issue an NAA program approval letter to the business to make sure they actually go through with a qualifying contribution. And I think we mentioned this earlier, but we'll get to it again. Each donation is limited to receiving $150,000 in tax credits. So you should see that number line up with the proposals that you'll be reviewing. Nothing should be above $150,000. And just for a look back, last fiscal year, let's see, council approved 6.2 million in eligible contributions and businesses received from that, $733,000. This year, the state is capping the statewide limit for donations to $5 million. So Hartford will compete with the other 168 towns for that $5 million tax credit. Hartford-based nonprofits, I should say. And as I said, $150,000 is the tax credit limit. And here is just a kind of easy-to-digest timeline of the process. We started in June, or right before June, rather, with applications due May 7th. We're here at the public hearing. You will finish these by July 1st and then on to the state DRS and the businesses themselves to kind of do the next steps. And I will stop there in case you have any questions.
Are there any questions from council? There being none. Do you have extra slides, Evan?
Yeah, really just one slide with Ronnie's contact information, my contact information. Just in case anyone needs to get in touch with us. And a quick thank you, but I can say that myself.
Well, thank you for that. If you can close down your screen in that way, I'll be able to see everyone on our screen. Thank you for that great presentation. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilman Sanchez?
Yes, thank you to you, Madam President. So when this was announced, was it announced in the beginning of the year or at the end of the year so that the applicant can apply for it?
So I'll say, Ronnie, can you remind me when we sent out notification or when folks would have known about eligibility? I think it would have been probably May or April.
It was, I think, in May. So we have to wait from the state where the mayor gets an official notification of the program announcement because, you know, statutory limits may change from year to year. So we get an official letter from the Commissioner of DRS. And then, once the application is published by the state, we open it up for applicants. So that probably started, I think, in May, early May. Probably the first week of May. We send out an email and then we also used our weekly distribution notification, Janice.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused because I think I saw that May 7th was the deadline to receiving the applications. Am I correct?
Let me call back. Correct, May 7th was the actual deadline. So it was actually before that. Let me correct myself. I believe it was April 14th.
Okay, so they have approximately three weeks to apply.
Three weeks.
And this is for the profit organization to apply?
No, there is a two-step process. So the first process is for nonprofits to apply for funding. So they apply, they talk about their programs, and they have to fill what we call an NAA01 form. And that's what we're talking about during this period. The second, the second application will be published by the state later on in the year. And that's for the actual businesses. They will look at all the approved eligible programs throughout the state. The state will publish that list. And then the businesses will see what's available if they choose to fund a particular program.
Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions by our council members? Any other questions? There being none. We have six speakers this evening. First to speak is Sarah, to present, Sarah Adanti. Sarah? Sarah, if you could unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
We can.
All right, sorry about that. Thank you for having this and offering this great opportunity. The Village for Families and Children, where I represent, I'm the Senior Director for Development. We've been blessed to be a recipient of this award in the past. The village has been around for more than 210 years. We work very hard to build a community of strong, healthy families who protect and nurture children. Last year alone, we provided services throughout Greater Hartford to over 20,000 children, adults, and families. That includes outpatient therapy, intensive residential treatment, substance abuse treatment, parenting education classes, therapeutic preschool, school-based programs, financial services, foster care, and adoption services. Our NAA grant for this round is for the replacement and installation of energy-efficient RTUs, rooftop units. I had to learn all about that in writing this. For heating, cooling, and circulating air throughout our Village South location, which is a 50,000-square-foot building located at 331 Weathersfield Avenue in Hartford. We have approximately 175 full-time staff members and we see about 5,000 children and adults in this location annually. This building used to be an old trolley barn and it's on the national roster of historic places. We took over the building back in 2002. And right now, the rooftop units are starting to fail and replacement of these units is imminent. These units are costing the village approximately $201,000 per year in electricity costs. With newer energy-efficient units, we anticipate a cost savings of more than $58,000 per year or close to 30% savings. This project will include the installation of two 50-ton high-efficiency RTUs with curb adapter, 135-ton efficiency RTU with a curb adapter, and 125-ton high-efficiency RTU that does not need a curb adapter. Our total projected cost for replacing these units is $367,263. So we are asking for the $150,000 limit to be able to help us so we can change these rooftop units and continue to provide the services that are so vital throughout the community. Any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions from the members of council? Any questions? There being none. Sarah, thank you for submitting your application and your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next to speak is Janet Fremuth. Janet?
Hi there.
Hi.
My apologies, I didn't have the option to unmute myself for a minute.
That's okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you about children's placement. While we are statewide and provide invaluable service to children and families throughout Connecticut, we do have a regional office in Constitution Plaza to specifically serve the children of Greater Hartford region. Over the past 40 years, Children's Placement is the only agency of its kind serving abused and neglected children throughout Connecticut. CIP is authorized to recruit specially-trained and supervised volunteers to serve foster children and abused and neglected children in their local communities. As a child's GAL in a protection child cases appellate both juvenile Superior Court and probate courts across Connecticut, our trained GALs investigate a case as a Department of Children and Families caseworker would. However, the caseworkers have multiple cases and our GALs have one or two. The children we serve are not currently living with parents. That'd be too easy. Our cases involve children where a judge will have to make a decision about their future and needs another independent unbiased advice on the case. They focus on what is best for the children solely, not what DCF says necessarily or what family members say, but what is best for the child to prosper in a loving home. There are 15,000 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect in Connecticut alone. At every given time, our seven offices are supporting over 750 individuals with over 13,000 hours of service in Superior and Probate Courts. I'll give you an example of the cases we serve. Both parents are addicted to substances. This is all too common. The children are taken by the Department of Children and Families or a caring family member steps up to take guardianship of the child. The child has been ripped from the only security that they've known and told to live in another environment, sometimes in different school, different friends and activities. If they haven't experienced trauma at the hands of their parents on drugs, they're sure are experiencing it now. DCF has the responsibility to make sure the current placement is safe. Let's dig a little deeper. A five-year-old child was taken from her parents when she was 18 months old. She's been living with a loving family since then and is almost six. DCF told the family that they can adopt the child. Suddenly, reports come in that mom is now sober and wants her child back. Of course, the family is devastated, but they were only a temporary home for 80% of the child's life. Communication between mom and the family have broken down. The GAL is appointed for a few things. Is mom really the best option for this child at this time? What will transition look like? Of course, DCF has a plan. What services will the child need? What services will mom need? What about the extended family? Will they support mother and child? Will they be able to see their paternal family? What will post-renunification look like? Parents have the intrinsic right to raise their children. The question is, are they able to manage that right? Many questions have to be asked to many people involved in the case. Recommendations are then made to the judge by the GAL for what the child's best interest. Child welfare started in the late 1800s. Henry Berg started the American Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals as he was deeply disturbed by the level of disregard for animals. He was asked by a missionary to look into a case that child was severely beaten by her guardian. Children were looked at as possessions and punishment was beating, spankings, and more. In fact, the Connecticut Department of Children and Families started in the early 1970s as a way to manage children in correctional facilities. It wasn't until 1977 that a judge in Seattle decided that children need advocates, that children's placement started in Connecticut and 17 other jurisdictions nationwide. In 1980, Congress passed a child protection laws nearly 100 years after Harry Berg fought for this child. The latest statistics taken in 2019 show that on average, over five children a day died at the hands of their parents in the U.S. Still, with the child welfare system in place, there are questions that need to be investigated and recommendations made to ensure the safety to the best of our ability to protect our vulnerable children. Parents have the fundamental right to raise their children. Animals are given their right. The question is, do they get the right to exercise this? Thank you for your time. I look forward to any questions.
Thank you, Janet. For your presentation. Are there any questions from our council members for Janet? Councilwoman Sargent?
Janet, thank you for your presentation. So what will you be using these funds for, the $15,000?
So most of our budget is made up of our staff and recruitment, training, occupancy, those kind of things. Because our regional managers oversee volunteers. And so really, it's to support the operations of our organization.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Sure, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Janet? Any other questions? Thank you, Janet, for your presentation.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next to speak is Adriya Giordano.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Adriya Giordano and I am the Director of Development and Communications at Chrysalis Center. Thank you so much for having me here, Madam President and council members. Chrysalis Center is a private, nonprofit, socially innovative, multi-service organization that serves individuals and families living in Connecticut. We help those living in poverty, veterans, men, women, and families who are struggling with mental illness, addiction, HIV/AIDS, homelessness, and those returning from incarceration. We are grateful to the City of Hartford for allowing us to participate in the NAA tax program in years past and for this year, allowing us to submit two applications to the program. The first one is for our Hudson View Commons Window Replacement Project. Hudson View Commons is one of the first supportive housing models in the state of Connecticut. This 28-unit apartment building in Hartford houses a combination of tenants who are formerly homeless and who have a primary diagnosis of psychiatric disabilities, substance use, or HIV/AIDS. Other tenants are individuals with low income. The program successfully provides these residents with safe and secure shelter while also providing links in the community to meet other basic needs such as food, clothing, and access to healthcare. We know that securing housing is the first critical step in providing and helping assisting homeless individuals. The building is more than 50 years old and needs to have windows replaced to improve energy efficiency. Some of the original window units have been replaced as we've had funding. However, the remaining 47 older buildings, older windows, excuse me, have leaks which allow drafts into the building. Funding from the NAA Tax Credit Program will help us purchase new, well-insulated windows for the residents living there. These new windows will improve the building's energy efficiency, but above and beyond this, they will improve the overall environment for our residents. We are committed to our work in the community and will not stop until every individual and family has a safe and affordable and comfortable place to call home. The second project is our food hub. Chrysalis Center's food hub includes a variety of programs and initiatives which address the critical issue of food insecurity and lack of fresh nutritious foods in the poorest neighborhoods in the north end of Hartford. Our food hub includes our sustainable and edible two-acre food forest, Fresh Place, our innovative fresh food pantry, our farmer's market, our gardens, and our hydroponic grow center, as well as our culinary arts training program. Funding from NAA tax credits will help us expand our food hub through agricultural production and food distribution, offer case management to address the root causes of food insecurity, and provide food-related job training to increase our clients' workforce skills. Thank you all for your wonderful support of our two programs and for approval.
Thank you, Adriya, for your presentation. Are there any questions from our council members? Councilman Gail?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Ms. Giordano, just wondering if you know how much Chrysalis received in tax credits last year under this program?
We did not receive. We received about 13,000 in tax credits. It was for energy efficiency project and it was at the 60%. It was, I'm sorry, we received about 13,000 from one company and 7,000 from Eversource. It was on different projects.
The total of 20,000 or that 7,000 went made up to 13?
No, 13 plus 20,000 total.
And how much are you looking for this year in tax credits?
150.
Is that what you looked for last year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Gail. Councilwoman Sargent?
Thank you, Ms. Giordano. Great presentation. Could you tell me where your hydroponic growing of food is located?
Sure, it's actually located right in the north end of Hartford in our main building at 255 Homestead Avenue. On the bottom level, we grow lettuce, basil, microgreens, and we're looking to expand to start growing tomatoes and other produce. It's wonderful. I invite you all to come and visit sometime.
I'm going to take you up on that.
Please do.
Okay, well, we'll get your information from Mr. Johnson and we'll call you.
Wonderful.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? There being none. Thank you, Adriya, for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You too. Next to speak is Mr. Robert Fishman.
Can you start video? Okay, can you hear me?
We can and we can see you too.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Robert Fishman. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Immigrant Refugee Coalition. We're based on Woodland Street in Hartford. And we serve a number of immigrants and refugees, including undocumented or families that are mixed, documentation and not documented. What I wanted to let you know is that now that the Biden Administration is reopening the refugee program, that Connecticut generally gets 3% of the national total. The national total will be as high as 180,000 in the next 18 months. And Connecticut getting 3%, that means that Hartford, of that 3%, will probably get 1/3 or maybe a little bit more from across the state of new refugees in the state. We're excited about that for several reasons. One is that the program had been slowed down and gummed up in the last four years. So their families have been waiting, very much so, for their family members to clear the pipeline and come to the United States and join them. And in Connecticut, we have three agencies that are member agencies of our coalition who are refugee agencies. And in Hartford, it's primarily Catholic charities that will be the resettlement agency for the people coming through to Hartford. What our project is, is requesting 150,000 from corporations around the state that will support a serious job development, business English, and matching the needed jobs with immigrants and refugees to fill those jobs. And the reason I say business English is that we found out that a lot of foreign language speakers or speakers from other countries have difficulty with pronunciation in English. And business English is a way to assist them not only to know ESL, but also how to be able to speak so that most people will be able to understand them and they'll feel more comfortable in a business environment. So this is a project that we're hoping to go to Metro Hartford Alliance and get their support as well as a number of Hartford businesses so that we can help particularly in the Hartford area. And as I say, our office is based in Hartford anyway. I know the NAA program very well. I've been involved in it since the 1980s, so go way back with it. And it started out, by the way, as a $500,000 program and slowly grew to 5 million, but it stuck at that 5 million for the last five or six years. but it stuck at that five million for the last five or six years. It's been oversubscribed so that if the tax credit is sixty percent for a non-energy program or if it's a hundred percent for an energy program, the company, I'll give you an example, we get a donation from Berkeley, Berkeley, Bigelow T. Bigelow T is eligible for the NAA program. So when they say they will give us a thousand dollars and they find out that the credit has been prorated, we actually get about fifteen percent less than the thousand dollars. If the company wants to, they could submit the entire amount to us, but some companies won't do that. They'll do exactly what they get the credit for. I can explain that if you have any questions. But our feeling is, is twofold. One is Connecticut is losing population, Hartford included. So we're hoping that this new flow of refugees and hopefully more immigrants coming to the state will be valued. And by being valued, we will help them to help fill those needed jobs that are going wanting right now in manufacturing as well as in the service industry. So we have partners with Manchester Community College, with Goodwin University and University of St. Joseph's. And we're also reaching out to the Capital Region Community College so that they can be part of this program as well to identify those people who want to take advantage of business English as well as job training and advance themselves in our society. The other thing is that we've been around for twenty-five years. This is our twenty-fifth anniversary. And I think you know that Mayor Bronin is a big supporter of immigrants and refugees. And we know the town council is as well. And we appreciate that very much. Now it's time for the business community to get on board and see the value of these, of these folks to our community. Quick story. We had a Brazilian family that came here in April. Two boys, five and two. And unfortunately, they, to come live with their grandparents, their parents in their twenties and the five-year-old and two-year-old with their grandparents in one apartment where the grandparents resided. And unfortunately, May first, the two-year-old darted into the street and was killed by a car. DCF immediately went to the home and said, if you, you're living arrangements are not suitable, you need to get your own apartment within forty-five days. No help from the state. So we pitched in with a couple of churches, a couple of synagogues in Greater Hartford. And the family now is in an apartment and they're on their way after their period of grieving. And the five-year-old, we hope will have a bright future. And we raised money to support, you know, this, this crisis. So we're there for crisis situations, for legal assistance, social service issues, and working as a coalition to speak with one voice at the state Capitol on behalf of immigrants and refugees. So we thank you for your prior support and hope to have it again. And with that, I'll close and take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman, and thank you for the excellent work that you do on a daily basis and for sharing that story with us. Are there any questions from the members of council or Mr. Fishman? There being none. Thank you, Mr. Fishman, for your presentation. Good evening.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Next to speak is Kimberly Bridges.
Hello?
Hi, Kimberly. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. So I want to first say thank you for the support in the past year. Couldn't have done all the work that I've been doing without you guys. I have been teaching the performing arts for over thirty years, starting in Boston. Grew up in the city of Hartford, was bused out to Sims Berry Schools. Very low self-esteem, being bullied severely, twelve grade even, you know, as an adult. And I knew that I needed to save kids with building their self-esteem and teaching life skills. I've taught life skills for thirty years and I, what I did was took the tools of dance, step rap, singing, poetry, acting, and incorporated life skills with it. So I just want to say thank you for the support already. What I've been doing, COVID was very hard. Cause I like to see my, my students and make them feel good about themselves or give them a treat or I'm really big on hand-me-downs. I collect stuff, you know, because I'm also in the schools. Actually, one of my, one of the schools I'm in is Milner High Nick. And also MLK and any kid that I might see on the streets. Pulling over Tim Goodwin Communities First School, volunteer over there. So I just, thank you for the support we've already had. And, you know, like I said, with the COVID going virtual, it started off very rough, but then it turned out to be a really good thing. When the kids went back to school, there's still a lot of kids that parents were like, no, we're not sending our kids back. So I was able to reach them and also say that even though, you know, we're not on at this time with the group, do you want to call and talk? And we work on raps together and kids wrote a lot of good stuff. We did artwork over virtual. We've done poems. We've done dance routines. Sometimes it, you know, it was challenging because the kids would have to go outside on their phone or on a parent's phone. So you hear the neighborhood noise or dogs bark in their cars, but we made it happen. And then what I really would like for you guys to know, not only the virtual kids, the in-school kids, because I do everything. It's, it's really scary going back into the schools and still doing virtual, but going back into the schools. A lot of our kids were depressed. A lot of our kids were sad, not motivated. So, you know, even when I, you know, doing virtual, you had to do a lot to prompt them and even dropping off activities at the houses. Design a shirt. I do a lot of designing and stuff like that. So it was a lot, but I love doing it. I'm really afraid for what the summer is going to bring. Parents, the parents that are at work and the kids at home virtual. So, you know, there's been times I've done virtual where the whole family sat in, siblings. And I have one family where there's nine kids. And they all sat in and it's like, well, Ms. Kim, can my sister or my brother? Yes, it, it didn't matter for me. So that's what I'm about. And I'm so glad that Mayor Luke Bronin has been the first person to really support me on a larger scale with what I'm trying to do with the students. Some of the students are graduating today, so some of the in-person kids came yesterday and I got to see them and, you know, recognized them from being virtual. So I was screaming, oh my God, that's you, oh my God! You know, making a connection. So I'm just really grateful. I'm really grateful if, you know, look forward to continued support. But if there's nothing for me, you guys have already did above and beyond for what I love to do. So I thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly, for your presentation and thank you for what you do on a daily basis for our children. Are there any questions from our council? Shirley?
Yeah, I was trying, what is the name of your program, Kimberly?
My program is called The Gifted Ones Performing Arts Company. Where we teach life skills through the arts. So I know that the kids like the rapping and the singing and the dancing, so I use that to teach life skills.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
Kim, I think there might have been some confusion because we do have multiple public hearings coming up. Kim and the Gifted Ones are CDBG grant recipients. You won't see them on that list, so. I think wires might have been crossed, but.
Thank you.
Remember what Kim said for next week.
Okay.
That's very, very relevant.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate that.
It was still very nice to hear from you, Kimberly.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Next and our last speaker is Angela Harris. Angela?
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. I'm gonna take a minute and just share a couple of slides if you would indulge me.
Absolutely.
Okay, I am here this evening on behalf of Phillips Metropolitan Saint Mi Church to discuss our Phillips Energy Conservation and Public Safety Project for the Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal. We're seeking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from this tax credit program. For those of you who may not be familiar, we're on Main Street in the north end, right before the intersection of Westland Street. We have a full campus of our church in the middle. We have the Phillips Health Center, twenty-five fifty Main Street, the church is twenty-five hundred Main Street. And then we also have an adjacent lot right now to the south of the church. Just to make you familiar, this is the church building from the front. The Phillips Health Center houses several nonprofits and health providing services. The Cure Medical Family Clinic, the Main Street Pharmacy, one of the few in the north side of town. Harriet Home Health Services, Hartford Behavioral Health, Hartford Communities That Care, Mothers United Against Violence, the Mohammed Mosque, number fourteen. And we also house sessions for Narcotics Anonymous. And we open our doors for community meetings in our banquet hall. This is the assessors' original picture. When we purchased the facility, twenty-five fifty Main Street, that was the original site of our church. Actually, when we moved from Blue Hills Avenue. It's a three-story office building built in nineteen sixty and we purchased it back in nineteen ninety-six. And as you can imagine, prior to our purchasing the building, it sat dormant. I was told it was an old state office building and it sat dormant for maybe fifteen to twenty years. We have the need right now for the energy conservation to replace HVAC units, twelve which sit on the roof and four that are on the ground level to provide adequate heating and cooling for our tenants and to, in order to keep the rents reasonable so that particularly our nonprofits that are receiving funds can focus those funds on their programming and to make sure that they're able to provide their employees livable wages. We're seeking these funds so that we can upgrade all the units, both on the roof and on the ground level. The total project cost is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, of which a hundred and fifty, we're see, a hundred and fifty thousand we're seeking from the NAA funding and the balance would be covered by the church. The parking lot that you saw to the south of the church, we have worked with the city to provide off-street parking during parking bans. We have a lot of apartment buildings across the street that don't have adequate parking for their tenants who do park on the street on a daily basis. So during, during the snow season, they need to park off the street. Currently, as you saw, the lot is empty. We are in the process of developing it, hopefully, in the near future. But in the meantime, we are availing the lot to the city we have for the past several years. And as you know, in the wintertime, it gets dark pretty early, like four, five o'clock, it's already dark. And we want to just make sure everyone is safe and that they can see as they, you know, get off the, out of their cars or in the morning when they are, you know, leaving out early for work, they can see what they're doing and everyone remains safe. So those are the, the two projects. That project is just under ten thousand dollars to install lighting. In both projects, all the materials and labor, the installation of the equipment is included. No proceeds will go to the church. Thank you for your time and attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Angela, for that presentation. I didn't know that Philip Ministries provided so many services or housed so many agencies. Are there any questions from council to Ms. Angela? There being none. Angela, have a nice evening and, oh, Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Angela, thank you for that great presentation. How quickly is, is the church ministry looking to move with installation of our solar panels? Are you in a process already?
So the, the lighting isn't designated just yet as solar, but we want to do that as soon as possible, so we'd be ready for the, the winter months. However, the funding and the projects are for, for the next annual year. I guess Ronnie could explain that to you. So the, the work has to be done in the fiscal year of the grant. So as soon as the funds would be available, we'd be ready to start.
So the next fiscal year, so fiscal year twenty-two?
If I could intertwine. Once the state publishes the approved business contributions, they usually come out sometimes November, December, sometimes later than that. But we're talking about January, around the January period of the following year, so it'd be January two twenty-two. Once a program has been approved for contributions, the organization has two years to complete the program. So once the money has been released, they technically could start. But they have two years to utilize those funds.
Gotcha. So in theory, this, their approval can extend between two different fiscal years?
Correct.
Have you, I'm sorry, you look like you're getting ready to say something.
No, I was gonna say the hardest nut to crack in this program is actually getting the businesses to support your project because it's the best-kept secret in town. No, none of the businesses really know about it and it's really an uphill battle to market. It, it sounds really, I don't know, it sounds like a scam. I think people are not really trusting that this is really a legit program. So I've also reached out to the DRS staff to see if they could do a better job and assist us with marketing this great opportunity for businesses to be able to direct their tax dollars. It's critically important and it's a great way for them to be socially responsible and contribute directly to the communities that they serve.
What's the name of the vendor that you are looking to? What's the name of the vendor that you are looking to do business with, with installation of the solar panels?
So I have, we have quotes. And again, because this process takes so long, we have to probably before we roll out the project, we have to, by our policies, have the three bids again locked down. We have a minority contractor, Direct Electrical, to put in the lighting, was the most responsible bid that we shared for the proposal. But we do have, as we are trying to be energy efficient. We have the requirement to rebid it closer to the time of the project. So even the bids that we have right now, to hold them, you know, a year out, you know, they understand that this is a process, but we're trying to be responsible with that. So there's a HVAC, an HVAC bid that we have from another local contractor. That, those, that company is MA Garamella. That one is out of Shelton, Connecticut. The because they've serviced the building for, over the years. And they're our current contractor for repairs. So we use them for the quote. It's very antiquated equipment and it takes somebody that's been around a long time to maintain the equipment. So not, a lot of the local suppliers aren't equipped to do, do the work for those, to maintain those units.
And, um, I think, thank you for that. The, uh, once the solar panel, well, how long will this project take? And has there been a cost analysis that maybe you can share with us as to how much this would drive down the rent rates if it does for those, um, those that pay rent?
So right now, we're not looking for it to drive down the rent rates. We're looking for it to be able to maintain the rates so that we don't have to increase the rates for rents as the cost of energy increases. So, um, and in terms of the, the duration of the project, because the building is active, um, we would be doing a phased project so that we don't have, you know, you can't possibly replace all of them at the same time. So we have a order of operation based on the life expectancy of each unit. The useful life is, is coming up on a few of them and we want to try to get this done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. My last question, what is the, because you have some phenomenal organizations that are occupying space in that building and they have done a tremendous job regarding the health, welfare and public safety of residents in Hartford and more importantly, in North Hartford. Upon average, how much is the, the rent in that building?
It varies based on the amount of space that each tenant houses. So I'd rather, in this public forum, not get into the specifics. Not that I, I'm no longer a trustee, so I don't have them at top of mind anyway. So, sorry about that.
No, 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 that's, that's fine. I, I, that's why I wanted to hear that they vary based upon, uh, you know, occupancy or square footage within the building. That concludes my questions, Madam President. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Peter Clark, are there any other questions from our council? There being none. Angela, thank you for that great presentation and have a nice evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Wonderful. So that concludes our list of speakers for this evening. I want, uh, once again, I want to thank our CFO, Jennifer, Jennifer Hockenhall and the Grants Department, Evan and Randy. Thank you for what you do every day. David, thank you for your support.
Council President.
Let me get there. Councilman Gale?
Thank you, Madam President. I didn't have any questions at the beginning of this, but I would like to just ask Ronnie or Evan a couple of questions because as the presentations unfolded, I realized I probably didn't understand the program completely. So with your indulgence, may I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So do I understand that in this program, in order to get the, to, to even solicit a corporation for the tax credits, you have to have identified a specific project? It can't just be for your general operations?
That is correct. If you look at the, the, I think the first or second page of the PowerPoint, we have a list of eligible, uh, activities that are associated with a program. And basically, you know, an applicant will have to pick one of those areas and they can't go beyond that.
Okay, I, I, I saw that list and I thought that meant that was the activities that the applicant had to be engaged in. But I'm, I'm hearing the, the.
That's correct. That's correct. The applicant, there's, there's two applicants. There is, in the first stage, there is the nonprofits, which we're in that stage right now. They've applied and they have to fall within those parameters for eligible activities. And then once that is reviewed by city council, they approve it, we send it to the state. The state will then publish a statewide list of all the eligible programs throughout the state. September, uh, uh, 5th through October 1st is when businesses have to apply. And they will look upon that published list. And if they're eligible to apply, because they have to be eligible too as a for-profit entity, if they get approved, then they could choose any of those eligible programs and make a contribution. So there's, there's two parties involved, the nonprofits and then the for-profit entities that will look at these programs that are approved for eligibility.
And thank you for that. And I, I heard a couple of the applicants say very specifically that they were looking for air conditioning units, for instance. Is that a requirement that you come, when, when they make the application to you, that they specifically state how they're going to spend the money?
Correct. The, the actual NAA 01 form is a state application. And it's a uniform application used throughout the state as a whole. And when an applicant fills out the application, they have to obviously provide a budget of how they're going to use the funds they're requesting. There's a narrative section that will break down, you know, um, about their program. So if it's about energy conservation, they have to specify what those funds are going to be used for. If there's going to be any other dollars that are going to be matched, that has to be disclosed as well in the application. So, um, we really don't get into those specifics. I say we, the, the grants office, we look to make sure that the application is filled out correctly, that it's uniform, that it's eligible. Then the state, once they look at those applications, they really get into the, to the detail about looking at all of those numbers. And in previous years, the state has looked at those applications and if they have a question or they see an error, they'll contact the organization for clarification. So it's, you know, we try to prevent any mistakes from happening, but the state is the one that really looks at those budgets.
All right. Thank you. I, my second question, if I may. You mentioned a $5 million cap this year. And I'm just wondering, what, what was the total amount budgeted last year?
Five million was the cap. It's been like that, I believe, for a couple of years now.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gale. Councilman Sanchez?
Yes, I, I just want to, through you, Madam President, I just want to follow up on that. And, um, and Ms. Harris is, um, I would say concerned. And, and it's why I was questioning about the notification. So she, she stated that it's challenging to find the proper organization that will help in assisting in, 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 you know, giving that donation or the, you know, funding for tax credit. So is it the state's responsibility to reach out and notify all the private businesses, large and small? Or is it their responsibility, the nonprofit responsibilities, to, to advocate for themselves and, and reach out to these nonprofits?
If I may, that's a very good question. It is something I wanted to touch upon. So everyone involved, the city, the state, the applicants, the businesses, they all have to be involved to some degree. We all have a collective responsibility. In the statutes, if you read the language of the program, it doesn't disclose who's in charge of that. It's basically up for the businesses, not the businesses, it's for the nonprofits. When they're developing their ideas for a program, they have to think ahead and think, well, if I propose a program, I have to kind of market that program to someone that could fund it. So, and I get that question every time from applicants. How do the businesses get notified? And I tell them, when you're drafting your application and even before then, you have to be working and thinking with your partners. And having those discussions to say, look, we're applying this year for this program. We're going to need your assistance. Because the window of opportunity that businesses have to apply, um, it's like a two-week period with the state. The state publishes that application. It's an online application this year. So they have to act in a very short window of opportunity to apply and pick the program that they want. So what I tell people all the time is that you have to have those partnerships pre-established. And that's how a lot of those that are successful every year, they're able to get the same donors every year because they have these longstanding relationships with these businesses. Sometimes businesses will look at the published list and say, oh, I like this program. I'm going to support it. But a lot of that work is done beforehand. So to answer your question, it's really the, the nonprofits have to go out there, promote their programs.
So the nonprofit have to solicit the, the for-profit. And now, you know, to Ms. Harris' point, what support system is in place to help her to solicit these non, these for-profit businesses to make sure that they understand it's not a scam? You know, I, I can understand her point. So is there, what, what support system is in place?
So one of the things that we do, the state has a, uh, obviously an application for the businesses. They have a brochure. They have a whole section on their website that talks about all the regulatory requirements, how you're eligible, how do you fill the application out? That is already published. That's something that when we send out our announcements and our emails, we link that to the state's website. Basically, beyond that is word of mouth. So when we do our notifications, we always, you know, not only inform the nonprofits, but our office, when we send out the application, we do a general email blast. You know, so that goes to all the people that we deal with in the grant world per se. Could other people get that information? Yes. And so we use the Communications Department, the City of Hartford, to kind of get the word out as well. I heard last year, I think there was a comment from one of the speakers last year when we had our hearing that they recommended that the city use all business workshops or venues to get the word out. And that's a great idea. And I think because of COVID, you know, a lot of things were closed down. So we really didn't have the opportunity to act on those type of recommendations. But I think moving forward, you know, getting like development services involved, you know, when they're partnering or they're giving information out to businesses, hey, you got to learn about this program. It's called NAA. So we really got to maximize all of our opportunities to get the word out. You know, um, one of the things that I noticed is that for the most part, every year, we get the same major corporations, big corporations, you know, they know about this. This has been around for a number of years. So it's the same players every year that are giving money. So we, I definitely agree, we got to do more work in terms of outreach. And I think hopefully with things opening up now, we'll have a better opportunity to do so moving forward.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's, uh, I think that's the key right there is that, you know, we have a lot of other businesses that could take advantage of the tax break. But now we can also help the nonprofit organization to solicit them in a more uniform and easier path, right? But I appreciate that explanation and thank you, Madam President.
So Angela wrote in our chat, the online application directly to the state website, instead of the old paper form, will lend some credibility to this process. Thank you for that comment, Angela. Want to say something? Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from Council? There being none. Once again, thank you, everyone, and have a nice evening. This meeting is a, bye.